Yeah. No, that should be Curtis Joseph. That, yeah. I better correct you for the next one. Okay, so you guys are gonna have quite a few minutes to sign them for the next one. I think the other ones might be same way. Yep. Yep, you guys are gonna have quite a few minutes to sign them for the next time around.
I just thought I'd check it out.
Yep.
Mr. Clark, can you give a thumbs up if you can hear us?
One item.
Kia, can you hear us? Kia, can you hear us in there? Okay.
They did, they were meant to call. That's a good deal, they can always be just the opposite. Always.
Oh yeah, she just, I have to have six phone calls per hour. Six to my thirteen hands and I can't drive home from them. Cause they give them all sorts of weird. My dad doesn't even drive in any car.
Are you on there? There you go. The name Paradise is. What you know, Chris Fainer? Boom, boom. This where I'm supposed to sit?
I guess we have more. Will you text me that she's running late?
Somebody need to reset the clock in the back room. City Council, yeah? Alan, how's Bessie failing? I talked her a couple times after the first.
He's not here. Curtis? Oh yes. Oh, stay at the office.
You calling me? What's your name? I would do the question later. Thank you very much. Oh yeah, this is fair case.
I'm submitting my letter. My date, I think expires in December.
What expires in December?
By term.
His show ain't working with Pete Piper.
Before we start?
Yeah, absolutely.
Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Shreveport Cattle Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission. Before we get started, it is customary that we have a invocation and pledge to the flag. If you care to join us, please stand.
Bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together today. We pray for our wisdom and guidance as we work through the important business of our fellow citizens. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Could you join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our own.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson, Mr. Corvett.
Yes, sir. Welcome to the regularly scheduled public meeting of the Shreveport Cattle Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission hearings. For the purpose of hearing agendas, if you wish to make comments on an application, we have MPC comment slips at the speaker's stand next to the podium right here in the front. For further notification purposes, it is very important that you fill out a slip and drop it in the box when you come forward to speak. Please state your full name, mailing address, and zip code before addressing the board. We will call each case on the agenda in order and hear first from the MPC staff case manager, then the applicant, then those speaking in favor. Ten minutes are allocated to the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. We will then hear from those wishing to speak against an application. Again, ten minutes will be allotted for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application can then speak in rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on that case before moving on to the next case on our agenda. Please note that when the board is in deliberation, members of the public are not permitted to make comments. Any member of the public may make requests, may request a copy of the board's decision on a particular case by contacting our office at 318-673-6480 after 1:00 p.m. on tomorrow or by accessing our website at shreveportcatompc.com. For consent agenda items and other agenda items not requiring a public hearing, public comments can be made upon request by filling out an MPC comment slip. If comments are requested for a specific agenda item, the chair will offer an opportunity for those comments prior to the commission taking action on the agenda item. All of the MPC board's zoning recommendations are submitted to either the city council or the parish commission for a final decision depending on the location of the property that's in question. Please note that it is your responsibility to contact the appropriate governing body about their procedures as related to the matter you are concerned with. Copies of this document and the phone numbers to contact the government bodies are available on the table next to the podium and in the entryway to this room. As a courtesy, please remember to turn off all cell phones while the MPC board is in session. The commission values your testimony and appreciates your compliance with these guidelines. Those of you who are standing, you may come in and find an untethered seat if you care to, please. As we move down the agenda, we have one consent item on our agenda. Case number twenty-five. I'm sorry?
Remember, you have to allow Ms. Smith to verbally vote.
Let us back up. Ms. Bessie, can you hear me?
I hear you.
Are you in favor of the minutes being approved as presented?
I am.
Thank you.
Yes.
Consent agenda item. Consent agenda item. For voting now?
On the minutes. All right, Ms. Bessie, we're okay now?
I am okay. I said, yes, uh, approving the bid.
All right. She approved. Thank you. You guys ready over there?
Wait, you go ahead.
Okay. All right. Mr. Stephen Jeans, please.
Yes, sir. Uh, first case is case number twenty dash eleven dash P., which is a zoning request. We did receive a request to defer and continue this case. We will not be doing a staff presentation today, but if there's anybody here to speak to this, of course, we'll allow them the opportunity.
All right. If there's someone present to, uh, make any comments relative to case twenty dash eleven dash P., please step forward to the mic, give us your name and address, please.
My name is Gloria Freeman. I live at seventy-one thirty-seven Greenwood Road, uh, Shreveport seven eleven nineteen. And I really don't know much about it, so I'm not for or against it, but I do live right in the middle of where you're rezoning. So I'd like to at least make sure that there can be a provision to protect my peaceful atmosphere at my home. And, you know, I would be opposed to like twenty-four seven truck stop, stuff like that. I'm not opposed to like a small business or something like that, but I do live there. And I would like to keep my peaceful existence there. I've lived there for thirty-some years. That's all I wanted to say. Like I said, I didn't really know much about it. I did not receive anything. I just saw the sign.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else here who, uh, would care to make comments relative to this case? You did hear Mr. Jeans make a statement relative to the fact that, uh, it will be deferred and continued to another date, but you're certainly welcome to share with us your purpose of being here. If you would, pull that. Oh, you're tall enough. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. My name is Tony Cash, and I work with the Louisiana Conference Association of Seventh-day Adventists. We're neighbors right next to the proposed area just to the east there. And, uh, the question I have, I'm not standing either opposed or against. My only question is just, my first time being here and representing the organization, trying to understand about the landscape buffer, um, what happens in this situation with a, with our designation as rural agriculture and the changes? Will there be a buffer zone along the border? And so that's my, that's my question on how that applies. Uh, other than that, we, uh, look forward to seeing some new neighbors.
If you'll stand still just a moment, we'll invite the staff to make a comment relative to your questions.
Yes, sir. Uh, there is a requirement when you have dissimilar zoning, uh, like in this case, uh, to have a buffer that would occur all along that line. Um, even for the property that may be C one, that would be required all the way down to, to the interstate would be required to have a, a landscape buffer.
Okay.
Per code.
I, and I wondered, is that that Unified Development Code, um, landscape buffer, um, talking about, uh, I think it requires a solid fence. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I wanted to make sure I was reading that correctly and.
It requires a solid fence, and it also requires landscaping inside the boundaries of the property, and that acts as kind of a placeholder so no activity can occur in that area.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
One follow-up comment, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry? One follow-up comment, please. Please go right ahead.
The reason that this case is being deferred is because the applicant or property owner requested that it be deferred in opportu-, in order to have an opportunity to meet with all the citizens in the Timberline Colonial Western Hills Deer Creek subdivisions. At that time, the applicant will explain everything that's being proposed, uh, with the rezoning of the property at that location and be able to answer all questions, uh, relevant to, uh, that development. We're requiring, we're requesting a thirty-day, uh, defer and continue today. This is allowing an opportunity, uh, because the applicant and the, uh, neighborhood associations are expecting a large turnout to find a location that could accommodate, uh, a larger turnout than normal. As you can tell with the council chambers, uh, we have very limited seating here, but this will give an opportunity that every citizen that's interested in, uh, asking questions and finding out information about that development, being able to, uh, be truly thoroughly informed of that development. And I just wanted to just share, that's why these deferral and continues are being asked for, to have an opportunity to set these meetings up and conduct these meetings.
Thank you very much, Mr. Corbin. We appreciate that. Mr. Jean?
Oh, I think there's no one else on that case to speak. The, the next case would be case number twenty dash one twenty-four dash C., which is a zoning request. We also have a request to defer and continue that case as well.
Mr. Stephen, do we need to vote on that defer and continue?
Yes, you do.
Yes. Great. We'll entertain a motion, please. So, motion by Mr. Curtis, second by Mr. Cooper. All those in favor of deferring and continuing case number twenty dash eleven dash P., please vote yes. Thank you, sir. Ms. Bessie?
I vote yes.
All right. Thank you very much. She votes yes. Motion's passed. All right, Mr. Stephen?
So that next case is case number twenty dash one twenty-four dash C., which is a zoning request. We also have a request to defer and continue that case as well.
Mr. Stephen, do we need to vote on that defer and continue?
Yes, you do.
Yes. Great. We'll entertain a motion, please. So, motion by Mr. Curtis, second by Mr. Cooper. All those in favor of deferring and continuing case number twenty dash eleven dash P., please vote yes. Thank you, sir. Ms. Bessie?
I vote yes.
All right. Thank you very much. She votes yes. Motion's passed. All right, Mr. Stephen?
So that next case is case number twenty dash one twenty-four dash C., which is a zoning request. Uh, it's Captain Street Auto. It's located at thirteen forty-three Captain Street Drive. Uh, it's a request to rezone from C two to C three, uh, for motor vehicle repair and vehicle dealership with outdoor display. Uh, we're also trying to, uh, in this particular case, we're trying to look at an alternative, uh, approach to this case to where we can explore a small planned unit development that will allow us to, as, allow you as a board to place conditions on the property. Uh, it's over and above that what would be done in, in a, uh, special use permit, and the applicant is, is, uh, more than willing to do that and is already in consultation with staff to craft such a, uh, an application. So that would also affect the next case.
All right, sir. Is there anyone present who came to, uh, address the issue of case number twenty dash one twenty-four dash C.? Anyone present for that particular case? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion from board members.
Motion to defer?
Do I have a second? Motion to defer and continue. Motion by Ms. Cooper, second by Mr. Joseph. Please vote.
Yes, Bessie.
Ms. Bessie Smith votes yes. The motion passes to defer and continue. Thank you very much. Mr. Jeans, case num-, item number nine.
It's case number twenty dash one twenty-five dash C., which is, uh, the special use permit associated with the previous case I just described, um, which is at thirteen forty-three Captain Street Drive. This is for a, a special, uh, use permit. Um, it may very well be that when this comes back, you'll only have one case. In this case won't be coming along. It'll be all, uh, a, a planned unit development, a small planned unit development. So we're also requesting, the applicant's requesting a deferral and continuance of this as well.
All right, sir. Uh, board members, can I get a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Joseph.
Second.
Second by Ms. Cooper to defer and continue case number twenty dash one twenty-five dash C. Please vote.
Bessie, yes.
All right. The mo-, Ms. Bessie says yes. All right. Motion's carried. Thank you. Mr. Jean, thank you very much.
The next case is case number twenty dash one twenty-eight C., which is a zoning request. The applicant is the city of Shreveport, uh, Spar. The owner is the city of Shreveport. Uh, it, the address is seventy-four oh one Jewella Avenue. The request is, uh, open space to I M U. The proposed use is, uh, industrial light. The planner that we'd be presenting is Alice Correa.
Hi, good afternoon. Um, as stated, uh, the case is requested by city of Shreveport to reserve, uh, excuse me, to rezone approximately eighty acres from open space to industrial mixed use. If we look at the, um, if we can look at the aerial. It's this large triangular piece here. Um, the property is bounded on the north side by Westwood Elementary School and residential districts. It is bounded on the south side by the Union Pacific Railroad. It has a small frontage on Jewella Avenue and larger frontage on Mansfield Road, and you can see the development in that area. If we can go back to the vicinity map. The only prior cases for this site were the original zoning in nineteen forties to make it residential, and then there was another case in nineteen eighty-eight of extended use residential to allow for the Girl Scout Community Center at that location. Other relevant approvals in this area include several approvals for rezoning to community business and neighborhood business, which is the equivalent of our C two and C three zoning districts currently. There was also rezoning to the, what is now the Office Research District. The purposes of those rezonings were to allow for gift shop, shopping centers, uh, storage and retail facility, recreational vehicle storage, restaurants, um, some general commercial industrial uses, and another shopping center and some warehousing. There was also, uh, MPC approvals granted in the area for warehousing, uh, in a different location, and extended use for a vehicle body shop, and also some rezonings to the heavier uses of light industrial and heavy industrial to allow for just general industrial use and oilfield testing facility site. Uh, it's also noted that there were two denials in the area for more intensive uses. Uh, there's a denial for I two zoning for proposed refinery, and there was also a denial for I one for proposed truck stop. So there are some, uh, considerations going on for the area. Um, I would like to stress that, um, as noted, the, the property is of larger triangular shape and the majority of the frontage is on Mansfield Road. Um, the applicant is requesting this property to be rezoned to industrial mixed use for the intent of, uh, speculative intent of establishing an industrial park or light industrial, uh, use there, light manufacturing use there. So if we look at Mansfield Road along this portion, it's the predominantly heavier zoning. You can see of the C three and the industrial zonings over on that side, um, and then a large tract of undeveloped Office Research Land, and on the other side of the railroad tracks, the residential estate. Existing uses in the area are what was largely these, uh, the uses that these places were rezoned for, which is the oilfield services. There's a lumber company, several warehouse and distribution centers, a couple of gas stations, uh, used vehicle dealerships, pulp and paper manufacturing, and shopping centers and, uh, restaurants. On the Jewella side, the, whereas the smaller frontage, there's also a, a multi-tenant retail center, some offices, and, um, as you can see, apartments, as noted by the brown color on the map. Now, the industrial mixed use that they're requesting, it's intended for a mix of light industrial uses and some compatible commercial uses as well as higher density residential component to it. This is the lightest zoning district that would allow the request that their desired use, um, and it does reflect the existing character of the area. As we've already noted, there are several, uh, commercial and industrial zoning and establishments there, as well as the multifamily component with the apartments on the, uh, Jewella side. So the uses that are permitted in industrial mixed use are compatible, are the same as those existing by right, or permitted by right in the C three and the I one districts that you see around there, and they are lighter uses than some of the existing, uh, industrial uses in the I one and I two areas there. Uh, most of the uses in industrial mixed use are, uh, generally contained in indoor activities. However, there are some that have outdoor components. Those that have outdoor components, the majority of them do require a special use permit from the MPC, so there would be an additional level of scrutiny to determine if those uses would be compatible, uh, to the surrounding environment. So, uh, based on that assessment, the industrial mixed use is, is considered to be compatible zoning, uh, for that area. Now, there is some concern that the subject property is adjacent to the residential neighborhood. However, uh, any development that takes place at this site would be required to provide the, uh, landscaping, uh, screening and buffering for that area, and permitting the possible uses, even ones permitted by right in this, uh, industrial mixed use zoning. There are use standards associated with those, uh, that contain regulations, some of which would be like ensuring that activity takes place indoors, that there's no outside, um, activity creating nuisances. Um, as far as the land use, future land use for this area, uh, with the exception of this particular property being shown as open space, the, uh, surrounding area is shown or expected to maintain its same character of a mix of commercial and industrial uses. So the request to go to the industrial mixed use zoning does align with the master plan as well. So based on that information, the staff concludes that approval from, uh, zoning to the industrial mixed use is warranted. Um, alternatively, based on the information you hear today, you can deny the request to zoning or, uh, you, as the board can propose an alternate, uh, zoning or have us relook for alternate zonings. So if there are no other questions, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Al. For the benefit of your gentlemen in the back, if you care to see, there are a seat up front. There's a couple of more around if you care to sit down with us. Is there anyone here from the city who'd care to speak in favor of this particular request? Please come forward.
Hi there. My name's Rachel Luller. I'm here on behalf of the city of Shreveport, and my title is the Director of Business Development. It's a title that I've held since March of this year. Uh, Mayor Perkins asked me to come on board to help him identify what property we have within the city and help him identify opportunities to explore higher and better uses. Um, since joining the team in March, um, our office has been contacted by, uh, numerous companies and prospective manufacturers who are looking for opportunities in the southern region. Um, I believe that this property provides a unique opportunity. In addition to everything that Alice just, uh, relayed to you, I would add that this eighty acres also lies within the Hollywood Moretown, uh, Federal Opportunity Zone, making it even more attractive potentially for, uh, manufacturers or other businesses to come and develop in Shreveport. With eighty acres undeveloped, uh, I believe this is favorable and, um, look forward to the opportunity. Uh, as Alice also said, it was, this is speculative at this point. We do not have, uh, a company set to move into this land, um, only mean to get it prepared so that, uh, we have an opportunity and we have land ready when, uh, uh, such an inappropriate business or manufacturer presents themselves, uh, for opportunity here in Shreveport.
All right. Yes, Rachel? Any questions for Ms. Rachel? All right. Hearing none? Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who'd care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else care to speak in favor? Are there persons present who'd care to speak in opposition to this request? Anyone present to speak in opposition to this request? Seeing none, we'll call. Is there anyone here from the city who'd care to speak in favor of this particular request? Please come forward.
Hi there, my name's Rachel Luller. I'm here on behalf of the City of Shreveport. My title is the Director of Business Development. It's a title that I've held since March of this year. Mayor Perkins asked me to come on board to help him identify what property we have within the city and help him identify opportunities to explore higher and better uses. Since joining the team in March, our office has been contacted by numerous companies and prospective manufacturers who are looking for opportunities in the southern region. I believe that this property provides a unique opportunity. In addition to everything that Alice just relayed to you, I would add that this eighty acres also lies within the Hollywood-Mooretown Federal Opportunity Zone, making it even more attractive potentially for manufacturers or other businesses to come and develop in Shreveport. With eighty acres undeveloped, I believe this is favorable and look forward to the opportunity. As Alice also said, it was, this is speculative at this point. We do not have a company set to move into this land, only mean to get it prepared so that we have an opportunity and we have land ready when such an appropriate business or manufacturer presents themselves for opportunity here in Shreveport.
All right. Yes, Rachel, any questions for Ms. Rachel? All right, hearing none. Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who'd care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else care to speak in favor? Are there persons present who'd care to speak in opposition to this request? Anyone present to speak in opposition to this request? Seeing none, we'll call for a motion, please. Motion by Mr. Joseph, second by Mr. Roca. All those in favor, please vote.
Yes, Bessie Smith.
Ms. Bessie Smith votes yes. Motion's carried. Thank you very much. Mr. Jean?
Next is case number twenty-eight dash S.C., which is a preliminary final plat for a major subdivision. The applicant is Providence Development Company, LLC, who's also the owner. The existing zoning is R-two PUD. It's a twelve-lot subdivision for Providence Phase Three, Unit C, and the use is single-family residential. The staff member presenting is Emily Trant.
How's it going? Okay, Emily Trant, five oh five Travis Street, Suite four forty. So originally, we received this application. It was just for the final plat for a twelve-lot subdivision and four non-billable lots. The subdivision is actually re-subdividing some lots that were previously subdivided from some previous plats, and then it would be including five new lots of record. After we received the plat, we realized that it did deviate a little bit from the current MPC-approved master plan, so we asked the applicants to submit a revised master plan. So today before you is the twelve-lot subdivision, but also the revised master plan as a preliminary plat. If the preliminary plat for the master plan is approved, then any future phases that come before you could just be brought as consent agenda items, and they would not need a full public hearing. So as I'm sure you're aware, the Providence subdivision is part of the R-two PUD, Planned Unit Development. There are several phases that are still undeveloped. This PUD was approved in two thousand and four, and then it was revised in two thousand and fourteen to establish some more specific commercial uses. Once had the Grove at Garrett Farms included in it, but as you all know, that is now a separate planned unit development, and the revised master plan would now show that. So if you could. The revised master plan does show that it is no longer including the Grove at Garrett Farm. So Grove at Garrett Farm would be up here in that area. Pretty much everything is the same with the PUD. The only thing that's different is that the lot configuration and the streets are different. So, you know, there's no new aspects with the planned unit development. They're not requesting anything different with that original PUD, unless this is just the preliminary plat. When we review subdivision plots, we have a checklist, and we usually go through the UDC to make sure that everything is meeting the requirements of the UDC. However, because this was approved in Chapter one oh six, we will be using Chapter one oh six to ensure that everything meets the requirements. It is not located in a flood zone. They do indicate that there is a pipeline, Exxon pipeline through here, I believe, on the plat. The previous approved master plan showed that that was, that they had some lots building over that. However, this new one shows that they're not lots, and because that is a servitude of access, there won't be any future lots there. If you could go to the preliminary plat. They now have that servitude showing as just a non-billable site, and I think that that site was about one hundred and sixty thousand square feet in size. Yes. It's a little difficult to see here, but this is the lot one thousand here that is a non-billable site. So in Chapter one oh six, the R-two building site requirement was, or excuse me, the lot size requirement was six thousand square feet, and on this plat, not all of the lots meet that requirement. However, the MPC has historically used lot size averaging, so they include the non-billable lots, and as long as the average is above that or meets that minimum requirement, then it's acceptable. So as I said, that lot one thousand is about one hundred and sixty thousand square feet, so they're good to go with that. Engineering did not have any opposition, and because it meets all the other requirements, we feel that approval of this plat and the preliminary plat is warranted. However, you have the option to deny, or you could approve with conditions. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
All right, thank you, Ms. Emily. Any questions? All right, do we have someone here to speak in favor of this request? Anyone present to speak in favor of this request?
I'm Justin Sevier, nineteen twenty-two Chestnut Park Lane, Shreveport, seven eleven oh six. So Emily has been very helpful to us, and we sent, we sent in this small plat, which is in addition to our Phase Three, and in doing so, we did uncover that it did deviate enough from the original master plan, but back in November, we actually had, we had a charrette, which was the second planning session. We had architects and land planners fly in from different parts of the country, and we planned the rest of the master plan, updated it based on, you know, the demand we had seen and the product we already had on the ground. So it was something that needed to be done anyway, and so this is a good time to just bring that to the group and, you know, have that polished up and adopted. But anyway, I'm here to answer any questions you may have about this request, but I appreciate the.
Board members, any questions for Mr. Justin?
Miss Cooper?
Miss, sir.
Okay, okay. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else present who'd care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else present who'd care to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone present who'd care to speak in opposition to this request? Any opposition to this request? Hearing none, we'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Ms. Cooper, and a second from whom?
Me, Chris.
Mr. Roca?
Okay.
All those in favor, please vote.
Yes, Bessie Smith.
All right, Ms. Smith votes yes. Thank you very much. That motion passes. Mr. Jean?
Next is case number twenty dash one forty-one C, which is a zoning request. The applicant is Bonnie Summers. The owner is Lorraine Summers and others. The location is twenty-six twenty-nine South Lake Shore Drive. The existing zoning is R-one seven. The request is rezoned to C-one. Proposed use is light commercial. We have listed as Ben Moller as the presenter, but Emily Trant will be presenting for him today.
Okay. So applicants here are looking to rezone property that's about, just under an acre in size. As Stephen did indicate, it is from R-one seven, single-family residential, to C-one neighborhood commercial. The property was previously zoned C-one neighborhood commercial prior to the adoption of the UDC, so this is an example of one of the downzoning cases. It's on the corner of South Lake Shore Drive and Lake Shore Drive, and it is completely vacant land. It's completely surrounded by R-one seven district, as you can see in the zoning map here. The applicant, I'm not sure if it was the property owner, the same applicant says today, but it did see an application for rezoning in two thousand and thirteen to be rezoned from B-one, which was neighborhood commercial in the old code, to B-two, which was corridor commercial. And that was denied. The intent was for that to be a gas station and a convenience store, but I think that the neighbors were speculative that there would be a chance for any kind of alcohol sales on site, so there was quite a bit of opposition to that rezoning case. To the east, there was a, with a drawn case, the rezoning proposition was from R-one to B-three, which was a single-family district to a general commercial. And as I said, that was denied. To the west, there was a rezoning case, you can't see either of these on the map here, but there was another rezoning case from, excuse me, to the west. This one was approved. It was R-A to R-three, and that's this lot here. And then the one that you cannot see on here, it was another request from B-one to B-two, and that ended in denial as well. One other, final one that I'll mention, was the CUV PUD. That's to the south, as you can see on the map here. That was for the golf course and country club. There was neighborhood opposition to that as well. So I say all these to let you know that the neighbors in this vicinity have been consistently opposed to commercial districts in this area. The applicants were wanting to rezonate just to get their C-one zoning back, but also to have it more marketable for future sales. Staff felt that it could potentially bring a negative impact to the vicinity. If you are rezoning that lot to C-one, it could change the intensity of the uses there, bring more traffic, and it might encourage other property owners on that intersection to try and rezone their property to C-one as well, so that would change the character of the neighborhood. The master plan intends this area to remain low, residential low, so rezoning to C-one would deviate from that recommendation. So staff feels that denial of the rezoning is warranted. However, you may approve, or you could ask staff to explore some other zoning options.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, any questions for Ms. Alice? I mean, Ms. Emily. Ms. Emily, one more point, would you repeat what the staff's recommendation was?
Staff recommendation is for denial.
Thank you, ma'am. And if anyone here present to speak in favor of this request, if you are, please come forward and state your name and address, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Joanne Willis, three thirty-three Texas Street, Suite ten fifty, Shreveport, seven eleven oh one. I'm here on behalf of the property owners, the three daughters that are the heirs of the gentleman who developed the subdivision that you see surrounding this lot that's, that is the point ninety-seven acres. We are simply asking for reinstatement of our initial zoning that Mr. Summers had designated as commercial when he developed this subdivision initially. He is deceased. The three daughters could not be here today. I'm their realtor, and so I'm speaking on their behalf. When the Unified Development Code was adopted by the MPC, our zoning was lost. We had C-one, which was the old B-one. I think most of the opposition that has been cited by staff to previous sales, potential sales of this site, which I was not involved in, I've only been involved in this property for the last year and a half. I think the primary objection that the neighborhood has is the potential for alcohol sales at this location, and I do understand that objection, and I see that that would not be something that I, that I could endorse at this location. We did have an interested party who did want to do a service station, who did want to do alcohol sales, and I sent him down to the MPC office to discuss his plans with the MPC. They recommended that he not apply for that zoning at that location due to the previous objections of the neighborhood, so he went away. But for C-one zoning that we're asking only to be reinstated to does not provide for alcohol sales, so there's nothing that, that is in our request to go, to recapture our zoning that would, you know, imply that we would want alcohol sales, because you can't have alcohol sales in C-one. My, my protocol with zoning has always been, if I have an interested party who may want to do something in the neighborhood that might be controversial, that he first talk to MPC about what zoning he might need or she might need, and second, that they meet with the neighborhood groups that might be involved. In my experience with selling property in West Shreveport, or in this vicinity, anything in West Shreveport, the neighbors are asking and really begging for commercial development. They would love to see more restaurants in West Shreveport. They would love to see more positive development in West Shreveport. It's very difficult to get people interested in West Shreveport. But if this property remains R-one seven, I mean, I can't see, I can't envision a house on this corner. I mean, would you want to live at the corner of South Lake Shore and Lake Shore Drive? I can't see it as residential. I do see it as commercial. I see it as very light commercial, and I think that we could get creative and get something that would be non-offensive to the neighborhood. So I'm asking you to reconsider the staff's recommendation for denial of this application, and we would like to have our previous zoning reinstated.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, any questions for Ms. Wheeler?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Carvin.
Alan, when in the UDC, we changed some zoning, and that's what she's discussing. That was in seventeen, and we stretched that out two different times to let people come and say, hey, you know, you took my zoning, we want to get it back on the books. When was that last time we extended it? What was the date on that?
I don't remember the, the date that we extended, but we extended it indefinitely to allow persons at any time to come in and apply for restoration.
Oh, we're taking the time limit off altogether?
There's no time limit anymore.
Oh, wow. Okay. All right. And it was C-one on this property or C-three?
It was C-one on this property, and Mrs. Willis has just informed me of something I asked staff to research to find out, how the B-one got there on the property. And now we understand, and we had known that we may would have viewed the application differently, because the developer of the subdivision, and I guess he may not be with us anymore, but in his wisdom and vision, he planned for there to be some type of office use or low commercial use at that corner. And we, at this point, have no real objections to this restoration zoning.
But it never was envisioned to be a store that sold, a convenience store that sold alcohol, right?
The, the, under the old Section one oh six, an applicant did come in and applied for the change from B-one to B-two in order to place a convenience store there with alcohol sales, beer and wine sales.
Right.
As you probably remember, because I think you were on the board at that time, with strong opposition, that application was denied.
Right.
But with this application, it was always B-one, and with this application, we really don't have any strong objections to the rezoning and restoration of the C-one.
And a C-one, and I know it's close to I-two twenty, you just come down that little section, but a convenience store or a gas station close to neighborhood may be too much, but a C-one could be an accountant's office, a dental office, or some structure that looked more like a house, right?
Absolutely, and we can, if, if they had the C-one zoning restored at site plan review, we could work with the developer, whatever that person may be, in order to encourage them to do something real conducive to the residential care to that area.
Right. Appreciate it, Mr. Chairman.
Any more questions? Is there anyone else here who'd care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone here who'd care to speak in favor of this request? Or is there anyone else here who'd care to speak in opposition to this request? Any opposition to this request? Board members, any kind of discussion?
Can I, I have a question.
Please.
For the staff, can, can you refresh my memory? Can a C-one, or if it's said, I apologize. Can a C, can a convenience store go into a C-one with liquor sales and all that?
No.
No, ma'am. As a matter of fact, it can't even go in C-two, because there, C-two would prohibit, because it's got residential adjacency, could not.
That's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure.
All right, any other questions?
Yeah. Does that, C-one include restaurants?
Yes.
You could have a restaurant there.
But not liquor sales?
No.
No liquor sales, because it's within two hundred feet of residential zone property.
So it couldn't be a restaurant bar, it has to be just restaurants.
It could be a restaurant, but it could not be a restaurant with on-premise consumption of alcohol.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Carvin.
I'll make a motion to approve it to a C-one with stipulations.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion.
What's the step?
Mr. Carvin?
It goes before the staff on the site plan approval.
It would have to, anyway.
I know. But I want it stated more clearly for this particular spot.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Carvin, and a second by?
Nancy.
Ms. Cooper? All those in favor, please vote yes.
Yes, Bessie.
Ms. Bessie votes yes. Mr. Roca, for your information, there's a nice restaurant two blocks down from that corner. I highly recommend it. All right, motion's carried. Thank you very much. Mr. Jean, please.
Yes, sir, thank you. The next case is twenty dash seven dash P., which is a special use permit in site plan. The applicant is Riley Company. Joyce O'Neil is the owner. The location is the east side of Buckley Comp Station Road and Fur Road. It is for a special use permit in site plan approval for a wireless telecommunications tower. And Alice Correa will present the case. And Alice Correa will present the case.
Hi, good afternoon. If we could look at the area, give you the aerial image for that. AT&amp;T is proposing to construct a 355-foot-tall monopole tower. It's approximately 1,600 feet north of Blanchard Fur Road. That's about where this red dot is, a little off to the east of that in that large wooded tract. Their leased area is about 75 by 75-foot area, basically just big enough for the tower and its equipment. There are also some portions of it that will have, that the guy wires will be attached to. So the UDC requires a special use permit for cell towers that are not stealth. There is an existing tower that's a 257-foot tower, it's approximately three miles away, and I can show you that on a picture here. This is the proposed, excuse me, this is the proposed location in the center, and the 257-foot tower is over here. However, a justification letter provided with the application indicates that co-location on that tower is not feasible, so therefore they're requesting a new tower to be constructed. So the UDC requires, they have some regulations that require demonstration of the need, the information on the coverage area, the structural fall zone. We also have regulations regarding setback height, lighting, marking, screening, location and placement, and support equipment and shelters. So the MPC staff and our independent consultant, JRS Telecom Consultants, has reviewed all the plans for this application and the technical documentation, and determined that the proposed tower is in compliance with the Cato UDC regulations. If we look at the, can we look at the survey sheet? That one, yes. And I apologize for the size of this, because it is a very large development site. This survey sheet shows that the access site, as I said, it's a small area within large tract indicated right here, this square in the middle. Access to the site is via a long gravel road that connects down to Blanchard Fur, that's what you see, this gray line going down here. And the reason for that is that LQ Buckley Comp Station Road, which is directly adjacent to this or nearby, is on private property going back to the comp station, so it was not available to be used for access to this site. So they're doing a long gravel road down to Blanchard Fur. It has access gates both on either end, a gas gate at the street and access gate at the site itself, and there's required fencing around the leased area. So there's adequate security provided for this location. The proposed gravel road and the width of the gates has been reviewed and approved by Cattle Parish Public Works and Fire Prevention, they've determined that that is acceptable. On the site plan, do we have sheet C2? Yes, that'll work. The site plans that they've given us also show that the structural fall radius of 200 feet, which is indicated by this dashed line arc going along here, it falls within the parent tract property boundaries, so therefore the adjacent owner and the roadway, adjacent roadway would not be affected should the antenna structure fail. Our independent consultant did provide a letter showing compliance and recommending their approval. That letter does note that the plan is not in compliance with the UDC regarding stealth design, however stealth design is just a recommendation, it is not a requirement. All the other items are determined to be in compliance. With regard to development of the area, the master plan doesn't specifically address wireless towers, however it does stress the number and size and location, that they be done in such a way to be visually compatible with the surroundings. We look at the photo simulations that were provided with the application. This is looking, this is at the corner of Blanchard Fur and Buckley Comp Station Road, looking towards the tower location. As you can see where it's identified, it's not visible from the street due to the heavily wooded areas, and you find that as you go further up Comp Station Road, there's only one point in the middle where you're adjacent to it that you can barely see a tip of it, the rest of it is hidden by the trees. So there is no visual impact to the area with construction of this tower. So, but based on that information, the staff concludes that approval of the special use permit to allow this tower as submitted is warranted. However, you as the board, you can deny that special use permit if you determine that the approval standards are not met. You can approve it with additional stipulations, or you can approve the tower for a lesser height if you think there's sufficient information to go back and look closer at it during height requirements. Are there any questions? That's all I have.
Any questions for Ms. Alice?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Ms. Carvin?
On the plot that shows an aerial view with the foliage and the trees, I don't know what, if this plot is numbered, it's the Google Earth where you have a red dot on the middle of the road. Yeah.
Yes.
On that plot right there, can you put your pencil where the tower is actually going to be? Make an X?
Right.
It's going to be right off to the right of that red dot, okay. So the tower's 335?
It's 355 feet.
55, and how far is that dot off the road?
200 feet.
200 feet.
Which is, I'm sorry.
And no way that it can hit the Buckley compressor station or any residential?
It's designed to fail structurally so that it will fall within a 200-foot radius. And that 200-foot radius is just at that property line.
Is the Buckley compressor station within 355 feet of that site?
I did not do that measurement, I didn't know.
Isn't that it on the top part of the map?
It is, yes, right here.
Well, you don't know the distance from that dot to the front gate of the Buckley station, right?
It appears to be, just visually from what I'm looking at now, it appears to be further.
Okay.
Because this is, the distance from this dot to this dot is 200 feet.
But that's not.
So it looks like you're more than double that.
Right. And they're aware of this, they were notified about this tower, right?
Yes.
Okay. And it doesn't have anything to do with them?
No.
And they don't have any opposition to it?
We've received no letters or concern of opposition or concern for this case.
So Enable or Center Point, or their name, what they're going into now, knows about this tower, and they don't have a problem with it, is that what you're saying?
The listed owner for that property, the comp station, was notified.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alice. Is there anyone here who care to speak in favor of this request? Mr. Carvin, get ready, here's your question.
Jason Lillo, 809 Hodge Watson, Carvin, Louisiana. Ms. Alice pretty much covered it, I'm here on behalf, I'm the applicant, I'm here on behalf of AT&amp;T and also the landowner. She pretty much covered it, so if there's any questions, concerns, I also have a representative from AT&amp;T, the RF engineers with me. We, all the recommendations, as we went back and forth and revised, we met all the codes that was set forth in the Cattle Parish ordinance. We're just asking approval of this project.
All right, any questions for Mr. Lillo? All right, Mr. Lillo? Is there anyone else here who care to speak in favor of this project? Anyone else care to speak in favor? Seeing none, is there anyone care to speak in opposition to this request? Any opposition to this request? Hearing none or seeing none, we'll entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Cooper, second by Mr. Joseph, all those in favor, please vote. Ms. Smith votes yes. The board votes yes, the motion's approved, thank you very much. At this particular time, Mr. Dean?
Case number 20-127C, which is a special use permit in site plan approval. The applicant is separate flock LLC doing business as connected bottle shop. The owner is Rita Bay. The address is 8982 Mansfield Road. The existing zoning is the Quarter Commercial District, CUC, and the request, again, is for special use permit in site plan approval for the retail sales of alcohol, liquor. The person that's presenting to that is Alice Correa.
Hi, good afternoon. As Mr. Dean stated, the applicant is requesting a special use permit in an urban corridor zoning district for a liquor store that's in an existing building. The only prior case for this site was the 1962 rezoning of the area to community business. This particular property was transitioned to the new urban corridor zoning district with the adoption of the UDC back in 2017. Some nearby relevant cases include MPC approvals for various uses in that neighborhood businesses and B3 zoning districts. All these include uses such as shopping centers, pawn shop, heavy retail sales, and outdoor storage and sales. The applicant, the existing building is on the corner of Mansfield Road and Southfield, excuse me, Southside Drive. It is on the edge of a large commercial area, it's just off the map here down towards the end, that's just south of the Inner Loop Expressway. That area includes several multi-tenant retail centers, furniture and furnishings establishments, heavy retail, minor vehicle repair, gas stations, medical offices, banks, funeral homes, several restaurants. As you can see, there is some single-family residential behind the commercial development on either side, but there's none that is directly adjacent to the property in question. So a special use permit allows an evaluation in possibly approving a heavy use than what's typically allowed in a zoning district. The retail sales of alcohol for liquor is actually only permitted by right in the heavy commercial zoning district, it requires special use permits in C2 and C3. The C4 zoning district is intended to accommodate intense uses that often involve outdoor activities or can create potential nuisances that require higher levels of mitigation and scrutiny to minimize the negative impacts. So even though the zoning of the surrounding area that you see is, there's some urban village that's off to the side that's not shown on that map, you have the urban corridor, the C3, even though it's zoned that immediately adjacent to it, all of the existing uses in that area are uses that are permitted by right in the C3 and C4 zoning districts. So the proposed use would be considered compatible with this area and would not have a negative impact. With regards to the future land use, the area around this intersection is shown as an urban village mixed use with general commercial along Mansfield Road and low density residential behind it, which is exactly the character that it has now. Therefore, the proposed use results would be considered acceptable or consistent with the master plan. As part of the special use permit, if we can look at the site plan. As far as the special use permit, we look at the site plan, the site considerations and operations, proposed operations. So this is the site plan that's submitted, it shows the existing conditions of the site. There's no expansion or exterior modifications planned or required for the building for this use. The applicant will be creating a dumpster enclosure that is going to be constructed back behind the storage building here to bring that into compliance with the code. And as part of that, the existing striping of the parking lot, or one of the parking spaces will be striped over to allow that dumpster truck to have clear access to that dumpster location. With regards to the operations, planned hours of operations are Monday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to midnight, and it's still possible, but not confirmed, that they would like to, they would consider operations on Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. As far as security and lighting, you'll see on the site plan, the lighting at the site consists of existing lights, utility poles on each corner in the areas. Those lights are directed to the property. In addition to those lights, under the overhang of the building itself, around the entire perimeter is lighting provided under those overhangs. Security will also be provided by an A-channel camera system that has night vision and DVR recording. There will be two private security officers on site, and the building will be equipped with an alarm system that has active monitoring and police dispatching if necessary. So based on this information, the, and the existing conditions of the site, the staff doesn't feel, see any need for additional stipulations or conditions on the special use permit. So we conclude that approval of the special use permit for retail sales of alcohol in the site plan approval as submitted is warranted. Alternatively, again, as you as the board, you have the ability to approve a special use permit with additional conditions that you deem necessary, or you can deny the special use permit if you feel that the approval standards have not been met. So are there any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Alice? All right, thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone present who care to speak in favor of this particular request? Please come forward. Give us your name and address, please, sir.
Hello, my name is Corey Shepherd, 3611 Judson Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71109. I'm the owner of the store for the proposed site. I'm the type of person who likes for my name to proceed itself, I take pride in that. In December of 28, 29, 2016, I'm sorry, I came before the MPC for a zoning permit for my first store, the Jump Off at 3701 Greenwood Road. And I spoke then about my five and a half years' experience at Tony's Beverages, and now nine and a half years, I still work there part-time, and now I get the opportunity to speak about my three years at the Jump Off. I speak to those places because there's oftentimes a negative connotation that comes when people hear the word liquor store. There are some stores that allow undesirable activity like laudering and panhandling, things like that, and that has always and will always be in direct opposition of my business model. I want people to think of stores like Tony's, Cuban Liquor, Lake Shore Liquor, the Cellar when I come up and I present something. And so I said all of that to say that if there's anyone here that doubts my intentions to do the same business model, follow the same business model through private security, which is always at the top of my business plan and operating expenses because I take it serious. In fact, even speaking about the Jump Off, if you all remember, that area where we opened it up is 3701 Greenwood Road, it's at the corner of Greenwood Road and Jewella, right between Whataburger and Burger King. That area was kind of known for cruising and the police had a problem with it, they used to put a mobile command center across the street at right aid to kind of steer that away. I firmly believe that when we opened up there, our focus on not having that kind of activity around, I'm sure the police could corroborate that, that traffic has moved to Huron Avenue, they don't even have that problem over there anymore, and I think that's due to my security staff that they, you know, they get on top of that kind of stuff right off top. And so like I said, anybody that doubts it, it's just, it goes back to what I said in the beginning, I'd like for my name to proceed, I look forward to the day that one day people hear that my name is involved in it and they get a sigh of relief. And I'm not just talking about liquor stores, my wife owns a nail salon and she's getting ready to open up a nail supply store any day now, she's sitting right back there. So anyway, I'd like to ask for approval, and if anybody has anything against it, I'm a very transparent person, I give my cell phone number to anyone if they want to call me and talk about any things.
All right, Mr. Shepherd, before you leave the mic, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Shepherd? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else present to speak in favor of this request? Please come forward, give us your name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Anthony Hall, P.O. Box 52853. I'm in support of Mr. Corey Shepherd in regards to his business and proposal, being that I've worked for him as private security. I'm currently a local city police officer, have six years' experience in the Marine Corps, two combat tours, so he's aware of my experience and expectations and what to look for in order to deter any potential threats or problems within that type of atmosphere. That's all I have.
All right, Mr. Hall, thank you very much. Is there anyone present who care to speak in opposition to this request? Anyone in opposition to this request? Hearing none, a call for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Ms. Cooper, second by Mr. Brokaw, please vote. Ms. Bessie Smith says yes.
Did it not take well? It stalled.
There we go, the motion's approved. Mr. Shepherd, thank you very much, sometimes that business down the street from you would cause one to want to go by a place like yours right close by. I'll explain that to you another time.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. You know, you start dating yourself after a while, I remember when Mr. Cory was a little boy, growing up and participating in city programs during the summer months, and when he opened up the store over on the Jewella interchange, the old Crenshaw, and he's done a, he's done an amicable job, a terrific job, and sometimes you just have to acknowledge that you're proud of a young man that came up through the ranks and turned out so extremely well. through the ranks and turned out so extremely well.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Mr. Dean.
Case number 20-129C, which is a zoning request. The applicant is Boss Life 2 Lounge and Event Center. Cherton LLC is the owner. The request is for C2 to C3 for reception hall. This case was assigned to Benjamin Mulder, but Jake Plant will be presenting today.
Good afternoon. The applicant wants to rezone a 2.85 acre tract of land from C2, which stands for Corridor Commercial, to C3, which stands for General Commercial. Prior to the adoption of the UDC back in 2017, the property was Zoned B3, which stood for Community Business District. This was a designation under Chapter 106 of the Shreveport Code of Ordinances. However, that chapter is no longer in effect. Thus, this would be a reversion of zoning since the equivalent to B3 is C3. The property was originally rezoned from B2, which stands for Neighborhood Business District. This was another designation under Chapter 106. It was originally rezoned from that to B3 in 1976 under case number C9376. The property is surrounded to the north and south by C2, which is Corridor Commercial. To the west is an NA Natural Areas property. And to the east across North Market Street is a combination of C3 and C2. The property in question possesses a strip retail center. The applicant is actually operating a reception facility. By rezoning this property for that, for C3, that would become a use by right rather than a legal special use. Surrounding the site, there's auto parts stores, fast food restaurants to the east and south of the site. There is a new station studio across North Market Street to the east. Other parcels surrounding the site to the north and west are not developed. And according to Article 4.3 of the UDC, the purpose of the C3 district is to accommodate regional commercial centers providing for medium, large-scale development. These can typically generate traffic, require substantial off-street parking. However, this definition is reflective of current land uses in this general area, including the site itself. But the proposed designation is also consistent with the future land use map in the Shreveport Cato 2030 Great Expectations Master Plan, which envisions this area for general commercial use as well. Considering what has been reviewed, the MPC Board is warranted to recommend approval of this rezoning. Alternatively, you can recommend an alternative zoning or deny the request. Are there any questions?
All right, thank you, Mr. Jay. Is there anyone present who care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone present care to speak in favor? Please come forward, give us your name and address, please, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Joanne Roberson. I will be the manager of Boss Life 2 Lounge and Event Center. This will be my first business here in Shreveport. I have operated a lounge before, but when I first initially thought about opening this place, this was pre-COVID, and it was just going to be a lounge. But I had to take another route because of the situation with the COVID. So I decided to make an event center where you do weddings, class reunions, and you could branch out and do other things. And I'm just here today to see if there's any questions regarding that I can answer to clarify anything.
All right, both members, do you have any questions for Ms. Roberson? Okay, I heard somebody said I do.
What's your address?
5956 Manitoba Lane, Shreveport, 71107.
Mr. Dean?
Yes.
In this particular request, what was the situation? What would the situation be on alcoholic sales?
That is worked through the Chapter 10 of the ordinances, and some events won't be allowed with caterers, but it's not something that is tied as a lounge would be where you're actually granting alcohol to stay with this. They would have to follow the guidelines that are already in place through Chapter 10.
Thank you very much, I wanted that put out there. Anyone else care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone care to speak in favor? Is there any opposition to this request being approved? Any opposition? Hearing non, we'll entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Cooper, second by Mr. Joseph. Ms. Bessie says yes.
Has it stuck again?
All right. This motion is carried. Thank you very much. Mr. Dean?
20-130-C, which is a special use permit and site plan. Robin Stewart is the owner and the applicant. 3890 Fairfield Avenue is the address. The current zoning is R17. It's a special use permit and site plan approval for a home-based beauty salon. Jake Plant will be presenting the case.
The applicant for this case is requesting a special use permit for a home-based beauty salon within a 210 square foot area of her home. If you could quickly just put on the site plan, you have it right in front of you. So the entrance of the hair salon would be facing south towards Oakley Drive. Meanwhile, the front of the house faces towards the east Fairfield Avenue. There is an existing 22-foot-wide driveway in front of the house, and parking is prohibited along Oakley Drive. So the front driveway will be used for parking, prime peril in this case. If you could go to the zoning map, please. The property is currently Zoned R17, which stands for Single Family Residential. It's surrounded to the north, west, and south by R17 as well. To the east across Fairfield Avenue is an OS Open Space District that happens to be the location of Betty Virginia Park. There haven't been any prior MPC cases or relevant MPC cases concerning home-based businesses in this area. Quickly go back to the site plan. According to Section 730 of the UDC, a certificate of occupancy is required for a home-based business. A new certificate of occupancy must be obtained every two years. Home-based businesses are allowed as an accessory to a residence in a residential district. For Section 730, beauty shops as a home-based business require a special use permit with approval from the MPC Board. This isn't required for all home-based businesses, but specifically for beauty salons. Approval of a special use permit is based upon several factors listed in Section 16.3 of the UDC to ensure that the SUP doesn't compromise health, safety, and welfare of the surrounding area. Regulations specifically for home-based businesses, the business must be conducted by residents living within the principal dwelling. Signs or displays on site to indicate the type of business is prohibited. Business cannot generate a greater vehicular traffic than what would typically be in a residential area. Cannot create additional traffic hazards or nuisances. And visits to the land use can, must occur between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. Specifically for barber and beauty shops, the use is limited to one assistant, one styling chair, and one shampoo bowl, and sessions must be by appointment only. The site that you are looking at right now exhibits the current improvements on the property, so nothing new is being proposed. All of this is existing. Could go to that picture in front of you. That will just show the driveway showing substantial space for parking. So there is sufficient space for two cars at any given time, one car for the customer receiving attention and one car for whoever's in waiting. It's not anticipated that the number of customers on site would exceed that amount. Due to the review, the MPC Board is warranted approving this special use permit. Alternatively, you can place additional stipulations upon this special use permit, or you can deny it. Are there any questions?
All right, Mr. Jay.
Also, I did receive a few calls from the neighborhood, and I did receive one letter of opposition. However, didn't really specify the reason for that opposition, but I did receive a few concerns.
All right, so thank you very much. Is there anyone here present who care to speak in favor of this request?
Hi, my name is Robin Stewart. That's my home, 3890 Fairfield Avenue. I'm just here to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Okay. Relax, it's okay. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Stewart?
Have you asked your neighbors around you if they're okay with you opening a business here?
So my neighbors directly on either side, I've talked to them, they're fine. I actually do my neighbors directly across the street there on Oakley. Also, my mother-in-law lives in the house that's on the property right behind us, so I do her here, too.
You think everybody will just park in the driveway that comes?
Yes, sir. We've got parking enough for up to 15 vehicles. That is far more than we will ever, ever need for this line.
Mr. Carter?
Robin, he had made mention that you could have another stylist. Is it just yourself or somebody else?
Just myself. It's just, it's a one-chair shop.
Your two daughters aren't, your twins aren't going to be there company?
No, I have a daughter and she's in college, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Ms. Stewart.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here who would care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone present to speak in favor of this request? Anyone here care to speak in opposition to this request? Any opposition to this request? Both members? Motion by Mr. Joseph, second by Mr. Coleman. All right. Ms. Bessie says yes? Motion's approved. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Dean?
Next case is 20-131C, which is a special use permit and site plan. Vernell Miller is the owner and applicant. It's a 1409 Crosslake Circle. Existing zoning is R17. It's for a special use permit and site plan for a home-based beauty salon. Jake Plant will also be presenting this case.
If you could please put down the site plan right there. This is another special use permit request for a home-based beauty salon. The applicant in this case would like to operate the salon within a 160-square-foot room in the back, in the back of her residence. The front entrance of the hair salon will be south, facing towards the south, while the front entrance of the house faces towards the west. There is a driveway in front of the applicant's garage labeled with two parking spaces, which may be used for customers. If you could go to the zoning map, please. The property in question is Zoned R17, Single Family Residential. It is surrounded entirely by R17. The closest commercial properties are located along Crosslake Boulevard to the south. There is a C1 Neighborhood Commercial District and a C2 Corridor Commercial District. There is a bar within the C2 district. There haven't been any previous cases concerning this property in question. This is in response to a violation, however, and there haven't been any relevant nearby cases concerning home-based businesses. Once again, per Section 730 of the UDC, a certificate of occupancy is required for home-based businesses. They must apply for a new certificate of occupancy every two years. Home-based businesses are allowed as an accessory structure to residences in residential districts per Section 730. Beauty shops as a home-based business require a special use permit from the MPC Board. Approval of special use permit is based upon several factors listed in Section 16.3 of the UDC to ensure that the SUP does not compromise health, safety, and welfare of the community. Please go back to the site plan. Regulations for a home-based business include that the business must be conducted by residents living in the principal dwelling. No signage or displays indicating the type of business on the property. The proposed special use cannot generate increased traffic. Pretty much the same stuff I listed from the previous case. The site plan does illustrate current conditions of the property. There is sufficient room in the front of the property, which lists, it illustrates two different parking spaces, one for the customer receiving attention, one for the customer in waiting. It's not anticipated that this proposed use would increase traffic substantially. It is located on a cul-de-sac, however, so all parking should be on the site rather than in the street. However, that can be accommodated based on the site plan as illustrated. Due to the nature of the business and limited impact that it would have on the surrounding area, we are recommending approval of this special use permit. However, you can also add additional stipulations or deny the request. There has been some opposition to this case. I did receive an email from a neighbor also stating support of this case. Are there any questions?
All right, thank you, Mr. Jay. We are not ready for the applicant or someone speaking on that person's behalf to come forward. Give us your name and mailing address, please.
My name is Vernell Miller Alexander, 1409 Crosslake Circle, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71109. I am the property owner.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Alexander?
I would like to speak.
Please go right ahead. We were waiting on you. It's getting quiet.
This is my first time, you know. I've been doing hair for total of 26 years at another salon in Shreveport, and I started doing, at this, my property eight years ago and hadn't had any problem, let's go with all the neighbors, and things turned bad for a neighbor when I turned property, called property standard, so I'm one of my neighbors. So that's when kind of like a reteller-toria came in place. But other neighbors, they're all fine.
All right, Ms. Miller?
I'm quiet. I have one person at a time at my place because it's still my home. I mostly do professional people, older retired people, some attorneys, mostly teachers, counselors, people like that, previous mayor. Pretty much a lot of professional people, so I have a standard. I don't just have anyone there. Plus, the traffic, sometimes you may see, I have grown children, have people on the fire department that stops by, so have traffic that sometimes is not hair people. I have a large family, I'm 14th one, 14th child, so I have plenty of company sometimes.
And it pisses you?
Yes. And then, one person at a time. I have grandchildren, so I don't have time for a lot of...
You don't have any grandchildren?
I have grandchildren, I have four grandchildren. And can I speak to Ms. Bessie? Hey, Ms. Bessie Smith.
Speak loud, she can hear you.
Ms. Bessie, this is Vernell. I used to play for your church and hope will.
She hear you.
Okay.
All right, do we have any questions for Ms. Miller? Hearing non, is there anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else present who care to speak in favor? Is there anyone present who care to speak in opposition to this request? Any opposition to this request? Please come forward and state your name and address, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Milton Ray Gibson. I spoke with someone in your office named Emily, and she told me that I could write a letter... and she told me that I could write a letter, which I did. I left at the entrance on last Thursday, and I have the rough copy of it here. I don't know if you received it or not, but I'd like to read it if you did not. May I do so? Dear service, as one of the owners of property located on Cross Lake Circle, my address is fourteen oh five Cross Lake Circle, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven oh nine. I am aware of a beauty salon owned by applicant Vernell Miller for some years. I first met who I thought was Vernell Miller, but it's actually the gentleman that lives at the house approximately in November twenty-eleven, when I was a seasonal worker at Lowe's Home Improvement, twenty seventeen Alka Drive. Mr. Miller was cutting some limbs of a crepe myrtle tree approximately twenty feet at the end of my driveway. Upon discovering I was scheduled for later in the afternoon, I returned home to find the tree cut to approximately two feet. Now, an example of where this tree was located could be exemplified by your cattle parish symbol and a Shreveport symbol. I was on the left of this residence, fourteen oh five, which would be the city of Shreveport symbol. Fourteen oh nine would be the cattle parish symbol. The tree was approximately right in the middle where the flag is, the black...
You say we're going to read the letter?
I'm sorry. Excuse me. When I asked why Mr. Miller cut my tree, he thought the tree was on his property. I called nine one one, get an officer out to explain to him that the tree was clearly on my property. After months of discussion, the officer would not say the tree was clearly on my property, although he did state that Mr. Miller had almost cut the tree to the ground. All I wanted was a report made and documentation that he had cut it and it was on my property. After I had cataract surgery on my right eye in twenty-eleven, I returned home from a part-time job and Mr. Miller had called SPD because I had cut the shrubs directly behind that same said tree. And Mr. Miller made the statement that this was some BS. I'd only cut the shrubs to see what was going on, on his residence. I explained to Mr. Miller that I didn't care what was going on at his residence, I was trying to see. I had a surgery on the right eye, a week later, had to get it on the left eye. A fence installing informed me that my eight-foot fence could only come to the corner of my garage. From there to the end of the driveway, it could be no more than three feet. From that time on, Mr. Miller, in fear of snakes, would place sulfur near his foundation and place sulfur on my property. Each time I called SPD, they would suggest that the sulfur may have blown on, from his property to mine. I spoke with an officer, Will Height, whose number was four oh one, eight five oh eight, Lieutenant Cobb, a liaison officer, Officer Joshua Dowell, his ID is number one two nine four, who made a report, one six dash one oh eight, six eight two. And he contacted Captain Willis at seven seven three, seven three eight three. As Officer Dowell, myself, and Mrs. Miller were talking, Mrs. Miller told me she was not afraid of me, that she could whip me and did not need a weapon, that she could hold her hands up, whip me, and do it with these. I told Officer Dowell and Captain Willis that this sounded like a threat to me. Neither agreed with me that it was a threat. At this point, I stopped speaking, stopped trying to be friendly. Curiosity prompted me, however, to see if a permit, which was, which I never saw on the building, or an inspector had never been out to inspect a premises. A worker in permit and inspections told me a permit was issued in nineteen eighty-four, eighty-five. They were not living there at that time. No permit was issued to enclose a patio. On another occasion, I asked, and a worker looked at the location on computer and then informed me that there was not a certificate of occupancy. This was over seven years ago. Ms. Emily at six seven three, six four eight oh, the MPC informed me that a certificate of occupancy is required before a license is issued. To my knowledge, all legal documentations that are entered into in the state of Louisiana, in the United States, require participants to do so in good faith or truthfully. If no certificate of occupancy was ever acquired, then no license was acquired. This would make the agreement null and void. The rule of law was never followed. Question, if there is a zoning change signed in the yard, does it take over seven to ten years to get a license? Question, if a building or structure is placed, no permit is acquired, no inspection made, in some instances, a cease and desist order is placed on the property and the building or structure is required to be demolished. Question, is there ornaments in the city or parish that stipulates the cleaning or gutting of a deer is permitted, is prohibited? In all my career as a service technician with AT&T, I've never seen a deer carcass inside the city lunch being cleaned or gutted at a residential premise. I asked several SPD officers, Cross Lake Patrol, who asked wildlife officials, some said yes, some said no. They could not answer. Finally, if Mrs. Miller built and closed their patio for business without permits and inspections required by law in excess of seven to ten years and now requesting a zoning change, it is my opinion, they don't deserve the zoning change.
All right, Mr. Gibson?
I hope I've been to a point where we're to speak of character because that's very important in this issue. I have never done anything out of my way to harm, say anything about these people that have harassed me, harassed my property for years. And because I have a wife who's known in the city, I have to agree with a lot of things that she said, I have to make compromises, and so I did. One of the first things they asked me about, what they are with me, is because I'm a, I've been in a church most ministry for twenty-five years. They ask me why do I go to church on a Sunday?
You have a minute and thirty seconds, Mr. Gibson.
Thank you so much.
Stand still. All right. Is there anyone else here who care to speak in opposition to this request? All right. Ms. Miller, would you care to make any kind of rebuttal at all?
Yes, sir.
Any comment you want to make, make it to us.
Okay. I first want to say I...
Start with your name and address.
Okay, sorry. Vernell Miller Alexander, fourteen oh nine Cross Lake Circle, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven one one zero nine. This did start fifteen years ago when I moved there. My husband is military, two wars he fought in, and there was a crepe myrtle that was on the electrical pole that was going up that had covered the light for swept coal to come out and put a new bulb in. So, he did get up there and trim the crepe myrtle. So, when he did do that, he did call the police. And upon calling the police, they couldn't do anything about it. So, it has been a problem, just only with that neighbor, that's it. And far as my house, it's been closed in since I moved there. We just made a salon out of it. It was going to be my husband's man cave, and I say, no, I want to, I'm ready to come home and work at home. So, other than harassing, that's never been, yes. My husband is an avid deer hunter, and he does do his deer on our lawn in the privacy. We pay taxes for that. That's my home. And also, he shared deer meat with Mr. Gibson. Still trying to make amends, so he should give our sausage back.
All right, thank you, Ms. Miller.
Can I, can I, can I ask a question?
Mr. Roker?
I don't know much about this, but you do have a license, right?
Yes, I'm licensed, been licensed for over twenty-six years now.
And which address do you use for the license?
Fourteen oh nine Cross Lake Circle, Shreveport, Louisiana. I have a copy now, you want it? You want to see it?
No, 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 that's the, that's the, that's the address that you, that you used to, to get your, your license.
Yes, I have license. Do you want to see my copy I brought?
No, 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 I'm just, I, I don't know much about this, but the gentleman was saying that in order to get your license, you need to give, you need to give an address where you can practice, right?
Correct. I have license, and I am licensed.
Okay.
Everything is legit. I don't know what he's talking about. I am a licensed hairstylist for the state of Louisiana. I pay federal and state taxes.
Mr. Roker?
If, if this process is completed, I think Mr. Jordan is over there. As far as the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, that will occur if you are inclined to approve the application. At that point, the zoning enforcement entity of the MPC would go out and do an inspection, and if it meets the requirements for a certificate of occupancy, Mr. Jordan will issue a certificate of occupancy for that location. As far as the information that's being provided, until Mr. Jordan is made aware that something's going on at a location, and he cannot take any action because he's not aware. But once he, once he's made aware that there is a need to go through this process, he generally contacts persons and should they take care of all the necessary requirements to do this.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. All right, ladies and gentlemen? You heard the request? Ready for a motion? Wanting to approve?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Joking, Joseph, second by Ms. Cooper. All those in favor, please vote. Ms. Bessie? All right. The motion, we're ready for it, here we go. The motion's approved, thank you very much for a minute. All right, Mr. Dean?
Next case, this case number twenty dash one thirty-two dash C, which is a zoning request. The applicant is Dorothy Farnell. It's Heartland Ministries is the owner, it's six fifty-seven Jordan Street. The existing zoning is RHU, and the zoning request is to CUC, which is quarter commercial zoning for the purposes of a community center. Alice Correa will be presenting this case for Ben Mulder today.
Hi, good afternoon. The applicant is requesting approval to rezone approximately a half an acre from the residential Highland Urban Conservation District to a commercial urban corridor, as Mr. Dean stated, for the purposes of a community center. The property is currently owned by Heartland Ministries. As you can look on the vicinity map, you see that the property is surrounded by other RHU zoning districts. It is directly catty-corner to the commercial urban corridor zoning district, which is what they're requesting. So, technically, those districts do touch across the street line since the zoning extends to the center line of a street. In this situation also, and you notice that even though the property's directly across from it, the property directly across from it and directly adjacent to it, even though they are zoned by Residential Highland Urban Conservation, those are also operating businesses as offices. Those are some of the prior cases, nearby relevant cases for this site. Was the approval for extended use for a community center in that area, as well as approvals for offices. There are no prior cases for this site in particular. As, as already noted, the, there is an approval for a community center recently. Not recently, I'm sorry, nearby, it was back in nineteen ninety-four. So, the applicant's desire to do a community center at this location, or to rezone for a community of center at this location is compatible with other uses in the area. If we look at the aerial image for this site, as you saw on the vicinity map, there is a large area to the north here and to the west here that is already zoned, commercial urban corridor. There are numerous businesses in that area, restaurants and otherwise, offices, medical facilities, and whatnot. And it's a very large expansive area. So, this property would just be a smaller extension of that existing area. As far as the uses that would be allowed in the commercial urban corridor, they are compatible with all the uses that exist in that large north and west location. There are a few that would be considered incompatible with residences, such as a gas station, or brewery, or a bar. However, those would require a special use permits from the planning commission before they could be established at this location. So, they would fall under that close scrutiny as well. So, based on the current conditions, the existing conditions of the area, the proposed zoning is compatible. As far as the future land use and the great expectations master plan, it shows the site in question is actually being zoned commercially. So, the request to rezone to a commercial urban corridor at this location is in direct alignment with the master plan. But based on that information, the staff concludes that approval of rezoning from Highland Urban Conservation Residential to the urban corridor is warranted. Alternatively, you can deny this rezoning, or you can approve an alternate zoning. Are there any questions?
Both members? Thank you, Ms. Alice. Is there anyone here who care to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. I'm Jerome Cox, twenty-one thirty-eight Highland Avenue, Shreveport, Louisiana. Mr. Chris, thank you for allowing me to stand up there all this time and make me the last one on the list. I appreciate it. Just kidding. No, we're excited about this. We, one of the things, I have four sons, and three of them are nurses, and one is a social worker, and they're really into health. So, one of the things we want to focus on is how we can help when it comes to this insecurity of food. So, one of the things we want to teach and educate folks on is how to eat better and how to, and how to plant and how to grow on the culinary side. I have one son that's a chef. So, we're excited about that, and so there's a number of things we want to do there. We work pretty closely with the Food Bank, as well as United Way. We have land in De Soto Parish, which we grow multiple plants of greens, and okra, and corn, and all of these type things. So, we're really excited about doing that, along with the, teaching them about the food. But also, we want to focus on seniors as well, that's really educating them in some way with computers and, and for as overall health. So, that's one of our plans, that's our intent, that's what we're excited about. So, is there any questions for me at all? Anything I can clear?
Any questions for Mr. Cott? All right, sir? Is there anyone else here who care to speak in favor of this project, besides Mr. Cox?
Yeah, I'm wired up about it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else here to speak in favor? Is there anyone present who care to speak in opposition to this request? Any opposition to this request? Hearing none, we'll call for a motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Emerson, second by Ms. Steve Marto. Let's vote, please. Ms. Smith said yes? Motion's carried, thank you very much. Right away, Mr. Cox, you weren't the last one. I don't know if you heard, Mr. Cox, I said you wasn't the last one. I don't, don't think he did, you interfered. Mr. Chair? Yes, sir. I'm sure that Dr. Cox...
I'm sure that Dr. Cox doesn't know it, but he was in good company with, uh, you and Mr. Jean when he started talking about his agricultural inclinations and his agricultural involvements, uh. I just could see Mr. Jean swinging and rocking, talking about everything he grows and so forth.
We have a half acre of, uh, mustards and turnips, so if anybody's interested in that, we'll bring them up and load it down.
Alright, that sounds like a plan. Thank you. Mr. Jean?
Case number twenty dash one thirty-four C, which is special use permit and site plan. Uh, the applicant is Vintage Design Group. Folco Woodson LLC is the owner. It's at sixty-one oh nine Greenwood Road. The existing zoning is C three. This is for a special use permit for heavy rental and service. And the planner is Jake Plant, who will be presenting.
The applicant, uh, in this case is requesting a special use permit to sell portable buildings, carport sheds, and other prefabricated structures on a one point one acre of land. Uh, the development will have a single-story sixteen by thirty-two office building. I don't know if you wanna quickly go to that, uh, building allocation. Um, there would be a sixteen by thirty-two office building, uh, five-space parking lot, and a fourteen-foot wide gravel, gravel driveway for fire truck and delivery access. Could go, uh, for the zoning map. This is the illustration of the, uh, front side of the main building. The property in question is Zone C three, uh, general commercial. It's surrounded entirely by other properties, Zone C three. There is some nearby C two corridor commercial, however, all immediate abutting property is C three. Uh, to the north across Greenwood Road is storage and rental and restaurant. Uh, there's restaurants to the west and south of the property. Um, there's a hotel, there are a few hotels to the south across I twenty. And to the east of the property immediately, on the adjoining property line, uh, that would be a vehicle dealership. Could go to Exhibit B, which shows the site plan, site plan. So there were three previous cases for this property in nineteen eighty-one. Uh, there was approval to rezone the property from R one, which was a single-family residential district to B one, uh, buffer business district, uh, which was a designation under Chapter Six of the Shreveport Code of Ordinances, which is now obsolete. Um, and they wanted to put an outdoor advertising sign on the property, the applicant at that time. Uh, nineteen eighty-five, there's approval to rezone this property from B one to B three, uh, community business district, that's equivalent to C three under the U D C. And two thousand eight, there was site plan approval with stipulations for a different outdoor sale of portable buildings. Um, however, that site plan was never approved. I mean, it was approved, but it was never developed. So if this site plan gets approved, that would be, uh, this would override that other site plan. Um, the applicant has done a pre-application conference with staff, uh, so we have reviewed this site plan prior to this meeting. So heavy retail rental and service is defined as larger, more intense commercial use, often requiring permanent outdoor storage, uh, service or display. Uh, there are no U D C regulations specifically tailored to heavy retail rental and service, but ancillary outdoor storage, uh, must adhere to regulations listed, listed in, uh, Section seven point three of the U D C. Uh, specifically, uh, no storage must, uh, is allowed to be in the right of way or setback. Uh, parking cannot be used for storage, and storage cannot interfere with vehicular movement. Uh, the applicant has illustrated storage on the site plan as the general area in which the, uh, buildings would be located. Since they're not permanent structures or fixtures to the property, uh, they didn't illustrate the individual buildings. Heavy retail rental and storage is permitted in C three with a special use permit. The U D C asserts that S U P shall not interfere with the health, safety, and welfare of surrounding property owners, and additional stipulations can be placed to mitigate any nuisances induced by that special use. Uh, however, considering how all the surrounding properties are Zone C three and their general commercial uses, um, it's now anticipated that this land use would create any kind of issues for these surrounding properties. Since they're all Zone C three, they all have the capability of applying for their own special use permits for this type of, uh, business. Um, thus, we are currently recommending approval of this special use permit, uh, without any additional stipulations aside from typical submittal of, uh, landscape, irrigation, photometric plans, uh, finalized building elevations, all of that which is typically required for a site plan review that will be, uh, approved by the executive director. However, no additional stipulations are being recommended by us. Alternatively, the MPC board can recommend stipulations or deny the request. Are there any questions?
Alright, Mr. Jake, hold on. Mr. Curtis?
Good afternoon. Is the applicant in agreement with the stipulations that you just delineated?
Well, they're not really stipulations. It's more so a basic requirement for site plan review, so regardless of whether or not he's in agreement, he will have to do them.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Jake. Do we have the applicant present? Would you care to come forward, sir, and, uh, give us your name, address, and tell us why you wanna cut down all of those trees and bushes right there?
Good evening. I'm Marcus Hobbs. I'm, um, representing the, uh, owner, Scott Flaherty, who owns Gemco Buildings, and, um, I'll just come in to see, uh, if you have any additional questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Before you about ask questions, I was being facetious. We were, I'm excited about you clearing this spot up. I pass there every day. Board members, do you have any questions for this gentleman? Wow, okay. Hearing none? Thank you very much, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Is there anyone else here who would care to speak in favor of this project? This request? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? Alright, hearing none? So move. Motion by Mr. Curtis?
Second?
Second by Ms. Cooper? Please vote.
Ms. Smith, yes. And this will be my last case.
Ms. Smith says, yes. Alright, motion carries. Thank you very much, sir. Jean?
Case number twenty dash nine S C, which is a preliminary plat for a major subdivision. Applicant is Moren Associates Incorporated. Harper Homes LLC is the, is the owner. Um, it's at, uh, the north end of Joyce and Michael Drive, approximately seven hundred fifty feet north of Pine Hill Road. It's a forty-seven lot subdivision, and it's a single-family residential. Jake Plant will be presenting.
The applicant wants to subdivide a twenty point five acre tract of land into a forty-seven lot, single-family residential subdivision. Uh, the plat in question illustrates lots thirty-seven through thirty-eight of Trinity Bluff subdivision unit number two. Uh, the lots range in size from one point eighty-eight acres, which is approximately eighty-two hundred square feet, to one point four acres, which is approximately sixty-two thousand eight hundred square feet. Uh, there are two roads. Uh, there's a continuation of Jace Michael Drive, which is an existing roadway, and there will be a Joseph Randall Drive, which is ex, an extension off of Jace Michael Drive. Um, both of these roads will terminate in the cul-de-sac. Uh, there are common area lots, thousand five, thousand six, and thousand seven, um, which are int- intended for utility purposes, not for building houses. There is a gas line servitude that extends through lot thousand and five and encroaches into Jace Michael Drive lots eighty-two and eighty-three. Could go to the zoning map, please. Uh, the property in question is Zoned R one seven, single-family residential, and is surrounded entirely by R one seven property. Uh, to the south, um, along Jace Michael Drive, which is the roadway that was previously illustrated, uh, that is, uh, Trinity Bluff subdivision unit one. So they, they did get approval for a previous subdivision. Uh, there is a church on Old Moore and Sport Road, however, most other land uses in the area are residential in character. Um, in twenty nineteen, a sixty-seven acre plot of land, which included the property in question, um, were annexed into the city of Shreveport. That same year, a portion of the subject property was rezoned from R A, uh, Rural Agricultural to R one seven, uh, single-family residential, and Trinity Bluff subdivision, which was, uh, unit number one, which was previous, sorry? Okay, I'm, I'm hearing things. Unit number one was approved. Uh, according to, uh, if you could go back to Exhibit A. According to Section four point two of the U D C, uh, new lots platted within an R one seven district must be at least seven thousand square feet in area and sixty feet wide. All of the proposed lots meet those minimum requirements. Uh, Section twelve point five, uh, dedication, according to that section of the U D C, any dedications, uh, proposed must meet the minimum width standard of fifty-eight feet, um, in order to constitute as a neighborhood two-lane local street. So these, both, both of these right-ofways, uh, meet that general requirement. According to the FEMA flood map dated May nineteenth, two thousand fourteen, uh, the property is not located within an area of, uh, flood hazard. City of Shreveport Engineering Department has also, uh, reviewed this plan and has, they have not expressed any concerns with the development. Uh, since this is the preliminary plat, a, a final subdivision plat will have to be submitted for approval, uh, as a consent agenda item to the MPC board before the executive director of the MPC can sign off on it. Right? As of current, uh, we are recommending approval of the subdivision plat. Uh, alternatively, you can place additional stipulations on approval of the subdivision plat or deny the request. Are there any questions?
Alright, Mrs. Jake, thank you very much. Is there someone here to, uh, present this request?
Good evening. Uh, Donnie Barker. I'm with Moren Associates, thirteen twenty-four North Hearn Avenue, Suite three oh one, Shreveport, Louisiana. Seven eleven oh seven. Uh, I think Jake did a pretty good job of explaining everything. I'm just here to answer any questions you may have.
Ladies and gentlemen, any questions? This is a case that I think came before several months ago, and it's the next step to what I can appreciate. Any comments or questions? Alright, Mr. Barker, see, you weren't, Mr. Dr. Cox thought he was the last one. Is there anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else present to speak in favor? Is there anyone present who care to speak in opposition to this request? Anyone present who care to speak in opposition? Alright, hearing none, we'll call for a motion, please.
I, I just have a question.
Yes, sir.
What is the structure that is next to the water tower? That is right next to that lot?
There is a church there, you know that.
Right, but at, at the, at the end of the street, there is a water tower, and then, right next to it, there is a, there's a structure that looks like a, I don't know, like a service for cars, or like a school or something?
You talking about the Trinity Development?
No, farther, farther north. I mean, I, I was just looking at the location, and he helped me put it on three D, and, and I, it just, I just, I, I'm just curious, because it, it doesn't look like a house, and it doesn't look like a retail, uh, location. It just, it's a-
Is it part of the subdivision?
No.
It's not part of the subdivision?
It's not a part of the subdivision. It's just, he just wondered what that structure is.
We, 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 we will find out for you, Mr. Roker.
Okay.
I'll get in touch with you to advise you what that structure is.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Roker? Alright, uh, where was I? Oppositions? Is there any opposition to this request? Hearing none, we'll call for a motion. Motion by Mr. Curtis?
Second?
Second by Ms. Cooper? All in favor, please vote.
Ms. Smith?
Alright, you're in, Ms. Smith? Alright, motion carries. Thank you very much. Mr. Jean?
Next case, this case number twenty dash two A X M, which is annexation. City of Shreveport is the applicant. Armco Incorporated is the owner. The location is ten forty block of North Ferry Road. Uh, it's at the, at the intersection of North Ferry Road and Southern Loop. Um, the intended use for the, primary intended use for the property is a retail grocery store. The planner, uh, presenting is Miriam Meridian.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, as, uh, Stephen mentioned, um, the city of Shreveport is requesting, eh, annexation, the property to annex to the city. It's going to be grocery supermarket with the fuel station and two small retail. And, um, kind of, um, serve seventeen thousand five hundred consumer and create eighty-five to one hundred job. Uh, the proposed, uh, property is, um, located in south of the city. Uh, from the west side, adjacent to the, uh, city, uh, border. And, um, it's twelve point seventy-nine acres. Um, as you see in the map, the, uh, proposed, uh, property and serve four neighborhoods in the city plus, uh, rural area, uh, in the parish. And, um, as you see in the map, it's kind of located in the, uh, commercial corridor. The property, uh, could be accessed from Southern Loop and Norris Free Road. And, um, there is, um, the, uh, another access to the property in the south that owned by parish. You can see the location of the property that is in the northeast intersection of, um, Southern Loop. The property, uh, zone, R E, if it's annexed to the city, it's going to be C two. Oh, we kind of, uh, had research to see what kind of a service is available for the property from the city. Um, the water sewer connection, it's already there in south and, uh, west of the property. There is two, uh, collected road that, um, give the access to the property. And also, uh, there are two, um, fire station. To calculate the revenue, uh, when it's full developed, um, it's based on the value after fully developed and also, um, sale tax plus the water revenue and sewer revenue. The developer, uh, mentioned if it's fully developed, the value of that, uh, could be, uh, nineteen million. They purchased the lot, two million and seven hundred thousand. And when we calculate the real property tax, uh, the potential is, uh, seventy-three thousand. And, um, as, um, the developer mentioned, uh, according to the previous, uh, sale tax, um, from one of the same, um, grocery store, it's one million. And, um, the water and sewer calculated, um, twenty-five thousand and, uh, forty thousand, almost. When we add up, uh, all these revenue, it's come to one million, one hundred thousand. Compared with the cost for the city, the police department costs 1,000, almost 2,000. And for solid waste and recycling service, it depends on who contract with, with the private or the city. Traffic engineering, we haven't any information yet, but we kind of estimate some cost because of changing zoning and it might increase the traffic. The developer is going to add two walkway in the south and in the west of the property that you can see 1,500 for drainage and 800 for sidewalk street. There is, if the Southern Loop on the east side of Norrie Ferry Road added to the city, because now it's been owned by the parish, they might add some amount of money as a cost. And we found, what we found as an advantage and disadvantage to annex this property, as we mentioned, there are water and sewer connection in the west and south of the property, so there is no need for adding any service. The property once developed has the potential to generate tax revenue. As we mentioned, 1,100,000 create job, 85 to 100 new employee, and improve housing value and it helps make in the future adding commercial. Also has the potential to benefit the surrounding community, include the rural area, to serve 70,500 consumer. And as a grocery store, benefit the nutrition for the food pharmacy with the drive-through and other services that there are high demand for the neighborhoods. Also bring the balance in the commercial and residential land use in the area. Decrease the commute for accessing to the food, pharmacy, gas, or other services. And the violation report is zero in the area. The fire department for the city or the parish kind of have minimum respond. Norrie Free Road and Southern Loop, it's already there and the city maintains those roads, if annexed or not, and accessible to the property. And Southern Loop on the east side of the Norrie Ferry Road is accessible, but owned by the parish. And as we mentioned before, Episcopal impact analysis shows transferring the undeveloped land to a grocery store would be beneficial for the community and the city board. The master plan consideration is the vision and principle of master plan call for focusing 50% of development and reinvestment within the core of the city. This property is located adjacent to the city border. However, the master plan also says the Shreveport Caddo should strip its economy and provide significant land for a range of commercial and industrial use, as well as building, road, and sewer and water. By all this information and data and analysis, MPC staff is recommending approval of the annexation. Any question?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here from this, from the city, care to make any comment, please? Or the applicant?
Hello, my name is Chase Hoffpower with Ramsey Hoffpower &amp; Associates, 1064 Gabriel's Turn, Shreveport, 71106. I represent the owner of Ramco. And we're just in agreement that the annexation for retail grocery store would be a great benefit to the city and we're, we're for it.
All right, any questions for Mr. Hoffpower?
You got nine minutes and 45 seconds left.
I would like to add that the owner of the property participated with the owner next door to bring the water and sewer across the street, you know, good 200, 300, 300 yards. So, you know, we brought the infrastructure there about a year and a half ago. So, we appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right, so thank you. Anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone present care to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon. I'm Michelle Salz, Vintage Realty Company, 330 Marshall Street, zip code 71101. I'm the real estate agent representing the grocery store coming into the market and just wanted to make myself available if there are any questions related to that particular use or new business.
Any questions? Ms. Hall, thank you very much. Is there anyone present who care to speak in opposition to this request? Any opposition to this request? Hearing none, any discussion?
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Colvin. Second by Mr. Joseph.
Ms. Bessie.
She's, she's already left the meeting. All right, motion approved. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Jean?
Next case is 20-119C, which is Code Text Amendment. This will be deferred and continued to the, to the next meeting. There's a request for to do so. We'd like you to add on that deferral. Right now, we will not be presenting the case today.
All right, got no argument for me. Any comments from the board? Then we'll entertain a motion.
We're, we're trying to leave. I need to ask a quick question. Old business?
Whoa, whoa.
I'm sorry, you said something about a motion. I didn't know if you were trying to adjourn or not.
Oh, no, we got a ways to go.
I got 30 minutes.
22?
Yes. I wouldn't say so, hell. Motion to defer?
Motion to defer.
Yeah, second.
Thank you, Ms. Demontow. Motion by Ms. Demontow, second by Ms. Cooper to defer and continue. All right, that motion carries. Thank you. We're down to old business. And before we move just perfectly past that, Mr. Clark, Mr. Jean, I've got a comment I need to make under committee reports. And that is, I failed as chairman of the board to recognize one of our board members last month, to the extent that this individual has been elected to represent the board as a subcommittee chairman for the master plan for the year 2021. And I wish all of us would join Mr. Bill Colvin in, in saluting him for being our representative with the city council members and the parish commission members. All right, Mr. Clark?
I would like to just run through a couple of quick things. I asked the land use planning unit, just give me an update on the number of planning pre-application conferences that were conducted comparatively between this year and last year, try to see what impact that COVID had had on development from last year. And the number of pre-application conferences up to this point last year was 51. The number of pre-application conferences up to this point this year is 52. So it gives you an idea that, by a couple of things, the number of cases that you have this month, next month with the deferrals, I think it's 19 cases. So it shows you that, contrary to some of the belief that development is continuously carrying the, the ability to, to service these development entities, we're doing extremely good job. I'd like Reginald Jordan, if he's over there, I can never see across with these Plexiglas barriers, but I'd like for him, if you would, just indulge just a minute to talk about the number of certificates of occupancy that been applied for five minutes.
Okay, well, the paper that's in front of you, look, the single pages would be had in the parish, and this is from October 1st, October 1st up until today, so the last, from the last time we met. We've only had one business open in the parish and it's a home-based business in that time. Commercial businesses, however, we've had 17 certificate of occupancies issued to commercial businesses. And like we've been seeing during this COVID, the pattern continues. We have opened, issued 41 certificate of occupancy for home-based business. So just like today, y'all had the two salon, home-based business. And that's kind of, I mean, kind of where the business has been trending to a home-based model and it continues to do that. Any question for me? All right.
Continuing, I'd like to advise Mr. Colvin, Ms. Demontow, Mr. Elberston, and Ms. Smith that the master plan advisory committee meeting will be Friday at 12 o'clock, a virtual meeting. So you can, can contact, the invitation will be going out for you to use the Zoom technology in order to do that. But this time, we think we will have all of the representatives. The last meeting, we had no representatives from the parish of Caddo, but they have assured me that they will be there at this particular meeting. This will be a very exciting meeting. Yesterday, I talked to you very briefly about the, the mid-month meeting because the, the community planning unit, they're, they're doing all kind of incredible things. Adam and Miriam and James are doing all kind of incredible things and there, there's just not enough time for them to make presentations to you. You know, it's like today, the neighborhood participation plan, you notice we deferred, asked you to defer three or four cases. These cases could have been made a lot simpler if we had had the requirement in the ordinance that you have to conduct a neighborhood participation conference before you come before the board. We are already experiencing misinformation circulating in, in some of these cases. What happens is, you know, it just, it takes on a life of its own, but, and then it becomes very difficult for an applicant, a business person, to come before you and explain when the council chambers and the entire government plaza building is full with angry citizens in opposition. So we strongly believe that these conferences can cut down on a whole lot of that. We're very optimistic that it will, it will, the council will support and the commission will support. One of the things I wanted to do, two years ago, I established a very difficult relationship with the development community. I actually reached out to them, they didn't reach out to me, but they embraced and allowed me to come and speak to them. And I wanted to share this information with them prior to your voting on making this a requirement and solicit their support in making this a, a requirement to have these conferences because I think it will benefit them more than it will benefit the actual neighbors. Because as long as you remove that, that negativity from the neighborhoods, it makes it a whole lot easier. And they will be able to explain exactly what they're proposing to do. They will have time to answer questions when you come here. You got 19 agenda items. You're trying to get everything through. You're trying to reduce it to 10 minutes and three minutes. And you have 30 people coming up with three minutes and saying the same opposition. If we do that away from this venue, we feel strongly that that will allow all of those questions to be answered. And then they will come to you and make a report on exactly how those meetings have occurred. We will be attending meetings with the first case that's on Greenwood Road. We will be attending meetings on the second and third case on Captain Street Drive, I think it's Captain Street Drive. These persons have already, they wish they had listened to the planner because the planning department always encourages them to do these things. But if it's not a requirement, they, many times, and I think Adam will attest to this, that we've had nobody to say, we want to set up a, a neighborhood participation plan meeting. Because if it's not part of what's required in the application process, they're not going to do it. It's not negativity toward them, they're just not going to do it, and I understand. But if, now these, these two cases, we'll be having neighborhood participation meetings. The applicant will have an opportunity to explain everything to them that's, that's involved in this.
And Mr. Clark?
Yes, sir.
On that, on that, would, would that be just for rezoning or, or what would, what would trigger neighborhood participation?
It's rezoning, it's, it's special use permits, it's subdivision, it's, special use permits, administrative special use permits. It's, it's a host of-
Site plan?
Site plan. We, we're trying to work out the site plan review process.
Do you all have any indication of how long this would extend the period of the review or, or the-
And I'll let him explain in more detail. When I asked Adam to, to work in developing this process, I shared with him that it could not be any longer than the process is right now. Because we don't want to delay whatsoever the development community because we worked extremely hard to shorten the process. But it will be no longer than what's happening right now.
If you have to mail out and then notification period of time and give people time to meet, then I've just, I've just talked to people that have had that concern. And, and I'm also curious, have you all spoken with anyone at the Chamber of Commerce on this?
I talked to Tim Magna, he's setting up a meeting. That's, that's the, the development community that I'm talking about. He's setting up a meeting with me, with the group that generally comes to those meetings for me to just get input from them as to what their thoughts are on this process. And any support you all can give would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
One more thing. So maybe you've been sitting here a long time. Yesterday, for those of you that did not attend the pre-meeting, we were talking about, like I said, the mid-month meeting. What mid-month meeting will be, will be planning meetings. There will be no land use cases on this agenda. It will not last over, over one hour. What we have learned with COVID is that we can do meetings virtually and persons are more likely to be on time and persons are more likely to engage in them. We're proposing that we have these mid-month meetings the third Thursday. Yesterday, I said the third Tuesday, but there's no need that that's the day that the ZBA does the pre-meeting. On the third Thursday of each month, it will be done virtually. We can, we can do it at lunchtime or we can do it at 1:00. But we want to give you that opportunity because at that, at those meetings, these type things will be explained in great detail. We've done a lot of research in annexation, de-annexation, annexation fees. We've done a lot of research in annexation, de-annexation, annexation fees. We've looked at annexation upside down and inside around, because we want to be able to present you with the best information that we can. We're also looking at some new zoning districts to recommend before you, some new reinvestment alternatives to, to show to you. We have all kind of things, and I would just, I request that you would submit to, commit to having a mid-month meeting starting January, in the month of January 2021, and, and it will not last over an hour, but it gives them an opportunity to not be rushing through to present information to you. And with that, I've lost all attention, Mr. Chairman. That's the end of my report.
I can hear you, man.
I'm doing the best I can.
I can listen to it, though.
I apologize.
No, no, and then one last thing before we go. Adam Bailey needs to give you an update on what's happening in community planning beyond what I've shared with you.
You stole my thunder when you talked about...
I apologize.
...master plan meeting, so I won't repeat that. In regards to the master plan progress report, since September, we have reevaluated the methodology of how the current report is written. So in doing that reevaluation, we're going to re-contact all the entities that are identified in the plan to get a more thorough evaluation. If we presented that plan to you today, would paint a picture that wasn't a hundred percent accurate, even if that picture is not...
Talk just a little harder.
Even if that picture is not the best view, we still think it needs to be accurate. So we're going to go back, not necessarily to the drawing board, but take a step back in that reevaluation, and we're hoping to present you an update to this report in early 2021. We'll go more in detail about that master plan progress report at the master plan advisory committee meeting on Friday. There are some upcoming Kotex amendments to both the city and the parish, potentially, in regards to the Shreveport UDC in December, aside from the neighborhood participation plan that was deferred today. There'll be another case proposing Kotex amendments that talk about special exception use process, special exception use, and if Mr. Dean wants to talk about it more after my quick review of it, he can. It's a use that's potentially problematic, but can be allowed of, due to subjected development standards. Special exception uses would be approved by the ZBA, and the primary use that we're thinking of right now is mobile homes. In regards to Caddo Parish UDC, staff is evaluating how to amend the current parish code to address both the citizens' concerns that were pre-COVID, as well as those that have been voiced since then by the Caddo Parish Commission. The community planning team would like the MPC to consider a six-month study for annexation, de-annexation, and the idea of any associated fees in regards to either one of those application processes. And in regards to the MPC website and one-stop-shop, we have selected a vendor. That contract has been sent to legal for a review. Upon approval by legal, it will be sent to the mayor for his signature. Once he signs it, then we'll get started on it, and hopefully that project will last four to six months. That's all, Mr. Clark.
Just one quick thing. You won't be seeing anything in regard to manufactured homes for the special exceptions right away, that it's a part of another potential development for an overlay district that would be targeted to specific areas within the city. But one of the things that we are proposing, you had two cases that came to you for home-based businesses, for beauty shops and barber shops. We believe that those could be better served if the, if the ZBA handles those cases, so you would have a shorter meeting, and they would have a, a, a longer meeting, but their, their cases have been averaging two to three cases a month, and this would more than double what they have, but would take some load off of you, so that's going to be coming to you next month.
All right. You're welcome. Thank you.
One question, Mr. Chairman. You, you mentioned some joint use things between the city and the parish. Where are we standing with the parish going forward as MPC doing their planning?
The parish has not made a, a decision. The parish has made, not made a determination. We will get busy making proposals to the parish come January one, 2021. We've just been doing research and just evaluating the existing codes in-house, and we may have some meetings with the parish administration and some conversations with the County Parish Commission, so...
So, but, but...
We cannot tell you that everything is, is moving forward, but the conversations are in our care of it.
So currently, the, the bill that passed, six ninety-seven, that takes full effect December 2021. So we got to have a resolution next year.
And we feel that there will be something in place. We just do not want to jinx it by making comments now about what's proposed to happen.
I understand. Okay.
Mr. Clark, Mr. Dean, where are we on the agenda?
We're through, Mr. Chair.
New business.
New business? I thought that's what we discussed. Part of it?
Nominate, not...
We have one other item. We have a report from the nominating committee chair.
Yes, we, we met and came up with our proposed slate for the officers next year, which would be Mr. Andrews as chair, Mr. Joseph as vice, or vice president, vice chair, and Mr. Elberston as secretary. And that will be up for vote in December, and I believe anyone else who wants to make a nomination could do that in the meantime. If you have another slate you'd like to present, that's possible too, so, but that's our proposed slate coming from our committee.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Any questions? Hearing non, we'll call for a motion, Mr. Clark.
A motion on the nominating committee?
No, to a joint.
No, that's what I...
I know, I'm messing with him.
That's what I had earlier. I wanted to bring something up.
Go ahead.
Okay. On, when the past chairman would read the case and start it off, and then the person would come up pro. Now Stephen's reading the case number and what the case is. When did that change?
Zoom.
When we went to Zoom... We were going through the Zoom process, and we, we wanted to get the, the planning, the land use planning totally involved in the process. They take the application from the first day, walks in the door, they track it throughout the developmental process, they take it to the pre-application conferences, they do everything, so therefore, I, you know, I, I initially started out introducing the cases, but I asked Stephen to start doing the introduction of the cases to make sure that everybody, I think you were not here at that time, but make sure everybody in the office is participating in the actual public hearing process.
Okay. So it's moved from the chairman to Stephen reading the case number. I'm okay with that. The next part of it is, we get a staff report, there's three or four pages, depending on the printouts and the site graph, and then the planner comes up to the stage, and I know that the first one on the pro gets ten minutes, and everybody else gets three minutes, but just like Jake's, the second to the last case, he talked about his for four minutes. This last planner talked to hers of nearly eight minutes. But here's, here's my point. We got twenty-two cases, and if each one of the planners had to talk about it and it wasn't deferred, we talking about over two hours of listening to the detailed information. Let's get it where the planners are out here, and they come up to the mic, and I understand, they, they started the case, they know what they're, about the whole issue of the case, but typically, we have a person like the gentleman comes up to the audience, "I'm here for my case for approval," and he quit talking, and I said, "You got nine minutes and forty-five seconds to talk." If we can get them to give us the pros and the cons, what's, you know, beneficial, not beneficial, you know, a thirty-second or a one-minute, you know, overview and not talk about it for eight minutes, because we can't do that on every case. That's just my opinion. I don't know if these others agree to it, we need a motion, or we just need to make some changes, but I think that's expanding what we need to know about each case. That's my opinion.
We thought that you wanted more information. We thought that you wanted the details. It lessens, the applicants a lot of time can't answer the question, they don't know the, the provisions of the UDC, but this is causing problems for you. It was just something that we wanted to do to make sure that you got all of the information, and that leaves less for the applicant to have to say. The applicant generally just comes up and asks any questions that you may have.
I, I don't, I don't think it's causing a problem, but just like this other gentleman mentioned, hey, I waited for the last, so he was here from three o'clock to almost five fifteen to hear his case. I'm just saying if we can shorten it down, and like I asked Alice some questions, about four or five questions about the cell tower. If we need to know more, we've got the four pages on the screen, let us get our questions answered, you know, it wouldn't be eight minutes. That's all my take is. And the other board members may want to chime in, they may want eight minutes on every case. I don't know. I'm just saying that that's what I saw in my take on it.
I think a summary is, I mean, I am, it is nice having this report in front of us that we're reading, so we don't really need a, you know, a recitation of the report, but I do think a summary, just a little intro is good.
I agree.
And helpful. I like seeing the planners up there.
All right. Can we just say we take that into consideration?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Colvin? You were perceptive. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments?
Motion adjourned.